Good evening, the time is now 6:09 and we're going to call this meeting to order. Ms. Munees, if you would lead us to the petri cups.
Yeah.
Peaches.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I hear him too, yes.
Under God. Shout out to the ultimate. Okay, Ms. Kanata, if you could please call the rules.
Ms. Chaney.
Here.
Mr. Gay.
Here.
Mr. Merz.
Here.
Ms. Munees.
Here.
Nancy Rodriguez.
Here.
Ms. Parker.
Ms. Sanders Connolly.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Dr. Sims.
Here.
Ms. Nicole Rodriguez.
Here.
If we could please take a moment of meditation and keep in mind Cindy Robyn's family. At this time, we would like to call forward Ms. Janot Ventura and Ms. Crystal Tenner for recognition. Ms. Sarah would like to say a few words about why you are getting this award tonight.
Thank you. I just think it's important to always spotlight when there's so many wonderful things that happen in our community and around and you just hear sometimes inundated with a lot of bad news and different things, but I just wanted to say, it was two weeks ago, they were at Chamberlain Elementary and it was a Girl Scout meeting and the Girl Scout meeting had ended and they couldn't find custodians in the building. They were near the media center and they saw that the media center was unlocked and they didn't leave, they waited. They waited until someone came. I would say it was over an hour, right, Crystal? Hour and a half?
I think we ended at 7:45, we left at 9:30.
Right. And just because they understood that the building was unattended and they didn't go. And I know, it seems small, but it's huge because we could have read in the paper the next day that the building had been vandalized or burgled, but they waited, they took it upon themselves and I just think that that just shows not only a great role model for our young ladies and men that are part of the Girl Scouts, but it's the right thing to do and it just was really nice to know. So, thank you for being vigilant on behalf of all of our kids and that's what it's about.
And the certificate reads, "Certificate of Special Recognition. The New Britain Board of Education presents this certificate to Ms. Janot Ventura and Ms. Crystal Tenner on the third day of December 2018, a recognition of your vigilance and for informing CSDMB administration when the outside doors to Chamberlain Elementary School remain open and unlocked. Signed by Nicole Rodriguez, President Board of Education and Nancy Sarah Superintendent Schools." Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Shake the hands, okay?
Yes.
Right here, right here. It's like the receiving line.
No, no, I can pick it up. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Always smiling.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Should I say that I have to assist students? Should I say it now?
Yeah.
Of course, that dates me.
My, the Girl Scouts love that 18 years ago, I was a fifth grader at Smith.
That's right.
That's pretty cool.
Congratulations, Crystal.
Thank you.
Thanks for selling Girl Scout cookies on Black Chanel. They full watched a lot better.
And I will say, our Girl Scout troops are growing, which is a really nice thing to see. I know they have it at Chamberlain, but also at Jefferson. I saw Wendy Clark is there, she's another leader. And we have quite a few girls. How many girls are we up to now in New Britain?
We're about 100 in New Britain for Girl Scouts. We'd like it to be higher, but unfortunately, we lack the adult volunteers to help us. We lack the adult volunteers to help us.
Nice plug, I love it.
So, unfortunately, there's so many more girls we could touch, but unfortunately, we don't have the adult volunteers to touch them.
So, if we found some adult volunteers to help, would that help, Ms. Clark?
Anyone who'd be interested, you know, I could use some help. I have 34 girls at Jefferson ranging from kindergarten to fifth grade.
Oh, wow. But they're there every week, too.
Yep.
It's just nice to see that come back.
Yes, it is.
So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you so much.
We'll look for extra.
We appreciate the honors of my troop leaders, so thank you, thank you.
Thank you for all of you.
And if you have any Girl Scout questions, please, I work at Jefferson Elementary. I need adult volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I'd like to thank Alderman Rosado and Alderman Reyes for attending tonight and showing your support for education. Can you, Christian education?
Yeah. I think it's not.
It is not, but I do that too. All right. So, we have one person signed up for public participation this evening, Mr. Board. If you would please come forward, please state your name and your address for the record. Hello, Mr. Solerino, how are you?
Green is all.
I was just recognizing the older people and you came in. Right time, good job.
I mean, it's everybody.
John's the next one.
John's 37 Heinz parents in New Britain. First and foremost, to the Girl Scouts, I wish they didn't leave as an Eagle Scout myself and just wanted to say thank them for they said this way. Alderman Solerino is now sitting, so thank you. Tonight, I just wanted to speak to you guys about the diversity and equity policy that you guys passed a few weeks ago. First of all, sorry, I couldn't be here on that night, my car broke down and on lecture night of all nights and that's a story for another time. But I just wanted to commend just the Board of Ed and specifically Merrill Gay for his advancement on this policy. As Chairman of New Britain Pride, I know it's something that we definitely take to heart as an organization and I know the Superintendent and I have been working diligently to try to make our school district more inclusive as we move forward and hopefully, we can work specifically in section H of that policy to develop medicals and metrics in order to achieve the policy. Going forward, once again, I believe that we've taken meaningful step forward for the school districts, both in collaboration with Mayor Stewart and Superintendent Sarah to ensure their city continues to work to be a place where all persons can work, live, and grow as individuals. So, thank you for your work on this policy.
Thank you. Is the aspect taken because of your superintendent?
No. I behaved.
I was like, I saw the...
I have a very short superintendent.
I was like, what?
I just have one.
Superintendent's report?
Very, very quick. I think Ms. Connolly Sanders is going to talk about our young men at the football game and I'll let you do that. But I just wanted to say, Nick, I think it was on Monday, you gave me a buzz on your way to work and you said, "Did you read the current yet?" And I hadn't. And he said, "I'm hearing there's additional dollars for the displaced students due to the hurricane last year." So, I just had a quick, really a quick one. Through ECS dollars, so that means that it is on city side, we received an additional $367,000, basically toward the students from last year. And talking to Kevin, and I knew that that was an issue before, we were getting money that should have been servicing students in the year prior, but there was a workaround for the state and Kevin, if you wanted to, I mean, it's basically kind of shifting funds so we can expend it for the school year.
Yes. I think we already called last year, it was $1,361,625, which was money for displaced students from the federal side. Those funds were deposited this September, October on the city side. The state worked with the external auders as to how to account for that. And the recommendation that came forward and our folks were adjusted last year was actually to reduce our Title I expenditures last year by $1,361. So, what happened is that grant actually is recorded in our books for last year, so $1,361 is showing up as a state and federal grant. At the same time, the $1,361 has been expended against that grant for last year, but we also reduced our Title I expenditures by $1,361. And at the same time, Title I needs to be expended 85% in year one of the grant. Our Title I has always been 85%, but because the recommendation was to reduce the expenditures, now we have to get a waiver from the state. So, we went through that whole process, redid our financials. It really has no impact on our per student expenditure because we still spent that dollar amount. So, right now, in the current year, our Title I appropriation is a little higher because our year one expenditures were lower. What you're seeing here tonight, which Superintendent is speaking about, is last year in July, there was some type of new legislation which actually extended through ECS. It could be one-time money, it could be two-time money, who knows? But many school districts in state receive additional ECS. And our appropriation or expenditures, our additional funds is 367. Now, in order to expand those funds, those funds would actually flow to the city as ECS. So, if you remember, if you ever looked at our budget, $72.4 million goes to the city in ECS. What you're seeing now is 72 million, let's call it 800,000. So, the city is actually receiving upwards of $367,000. In order to expand those funds, our budget has to be amended by the city. So, the 125.7 budget needs to be 126.067.813. There's a letter that I'll provide you all later from the Chief Finance Officer of the State of Connecticut. They talk about the MBR and basically, the State Department of Education says, "If the state doesn't give you any money for next year," let's say this number gets reduced, they're saying, "We're not going to fight the MBR if communities actually reduce you." And you'll see that in a letter from the state. But they're actually saying, "It is educational money, it needs to be expended by..."
Funds.
"...or it's not city money, it's educational." So, tonight, we will talk with you all and I'll send you guys a letter to review. We'll go over to the mayor and the common council. It's very short and sweet and it actually gives you all the backup.
That was the highlight of our week. Thank you for the phone call, a bit of work, Nick.
Sorry. Highlight of your week, Kevin? Committee reports. Trying to get my record loaded. Start with finance and operations.
All right. We are actually taking in a few grants. $750 from the Community Foundation for Fall of Success Event at NVHS. I don't know if Sandra was here, she wanted to talk, but she has a couple that came in for her. $2,000 for Donors Choice. Just lost my, sorry, apologies. Too far. All right. So, $2,000 from Donors Choice for the New Britain Transitional Center and then $9,375 for Child Health and Development Institute for Pulaski and Slay. So, now, if you wanted to talk about those two things, I thought they were pretty awesome.
The first item for the donation from the Community Foundation is a partnership event that is held for Fall for Success, senior celebration, where partners can come together on a Saturday and have workshops for our seniors to learn about CASBA, applied propagation, and more financially. And there's workshops throughout the building. This particular donation came in a little after, but it supported the T-shirt, so the students that registered online for CASBA were able to get a 2019 T-shirt and then wrap it up. The other two, the other donation that we're referencing is the Child Health and Development Institute of Connecticut. It was an initiative that was last year, very similar to our family engagement team. So, this one was for the middle school and it was, in your packet, there's the benchmarks that were provided. If you achieved benchmarks and less referrals, money was granted back to the schools and with the money, we're continuing that work.
I'll put it to 92. Okay, oh, it's in. Excellent.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Policy?
Policy reviewed information from the CAPE Conference regarding many of the changes. We also set some of our agenda for what to work on in the upcoming year. We have two policies that came forward to the board. One you'll note was under our consent agenda and that's because the policy committee felt it was, really, it's just updating our policy to make sure that we're working to provide handicap accessible and ADA compliant websites, something that we've been trying to put forward and we're just putting that into a policy, felt it was a very non-controversial policy, so it put on consent. And then, the other one has to do with just service animals and that one is worth having our full board eyes look at and a second reading, so that's on our main agenda.
Personnel are next, but we do have a meeting coming.
Next week, we're meeting. December 11th. Which week, yes, December 11th, we're meeting.
Okay, and curriculums, next meeting is...
I'm not sure, Matt. We're waiting on the curriculum audits.
We're still waiting.
Yeah, we're waiting on that, so.
So, we're going to be meeting with the auditors on the 11th. Am I correct? I am, I'm trying to focus. So, on the 11th, the state is actually coming out, so we'll have a committee meeting after that, just so we can see the results.
Right, so it would be a special meeting if we're not waiting till next month.
Right.
We'll update that then.
Excellent. Any forward reports?
So, while we're here, there are 65 preschool parents down at the library hearing about transition to kindergarten. So, this is all organized by the Coalition for New Britain Youth Early Learning Strategy Group. And that's a great step, get my folks thinking about this early, a good timeframe ahead of time, so they know what they've got to do to get their kids ready for kindergarten.
Very good and very exciting. Anyone else?
I attended the Hals' Winter Concert last week, Thursday, and it was very nice. They was just doing a fabulous job. Everything runs absolutely smoothly and it was nice. Kudos to all.
Actually looking forward to a lot of the sing-alongs. So, most people are aware, you know, our team made it to the playoffs for the first time in, what, four years?
Yes.
Came up just a little bit short. Sure, sure.
Much done.
This was the last team, I don't know if you know this.
Not as short as whatever they played.
Yeah, that's right. And you know, and I was just going to say, the team they played next, they blew them out in the first half, 50 to nothing, so. I mean, Greenwich is just a good team. I was actually happy to see, like, some admins there, Nancy was there, Mr. Ford was there, there was, and some teachers were there. That was awesome. The band was there, the cheerleaders were there. My only disappointment was them leaving at third quarter. I mean, I get it, it was a school night, it was cold, wasn't a great game, but that's all. I just, you know, the kids notice, the parents notice, they just know. They know when people are there and they know when people leave. That is all. Yeah, I was just going to, and I think that we can do something about that, right? And I think that that's something within our control to help. And to your point about school spirit, you know, back in the day, but I...
Back in the day, yeah.
Right, you know, and so maybe that is something that we discuss with Mr. Quarter and Ms. Clerk and about a commitment to, if you're in the band or if you're a cheerleader, that you stay it through to the end, right? Drive home silently with the rest of the players and y'all take the loss or the win. You know, that's that kind of thing and it kind of builds that team camaraderie and spirit. So, that's something we can address. I mean, and it was, I mean, I commend everybody that worked that day. It was a two-hour ride to Greenwich. It was no, you know, it was, it was a little bit cold. It was warm and it was chilly.
A long time since we've been in the playoffs, nobody knows quite what the protocol is for.
That is true.
Back in the day, we all knew what the...
Right, because it was habit. We're going a lot.
2014, pouring torrential rain. I know. We'll get there next year. Yeah. We're going to be there next year, next couple of years. Yep.
Talk about spirit and pride.
Spirit and pride. Well, you know, there's studies that show that they correlate with...
They do.
...academic achievement.
That is true.
That is true.
All right. Next on our agenda, we will have the S-Back Results Presentation by none other than Dr. Sanders and Mr. John Taylor.
Drum roll.
I feel like it's rocking.
I know.
It's like theater asking. They should be like...
Good evening. So, notes on S-Back Results, we're also going to be talking a little bit about SAT as well as what we're doing as far as the district, our district assessments. So, just want to give a couple highlights here. After two years of our test scores declining, finally get to say that we have made improvements in both ELA and math. We increased the percentage of students hitting growth targets and as far as their growth rates and I'll speak to that in a little bit. We also increased scores in almost every demographic subgroup in grade level, you can break it down to. So, I'd say over 90% there. So, that was good news when looking at the results. I just want to get the context of how we're presenting this. We were here last February, presented the accountability profile and performance reports that are released by the state, how they judge us as a district, how they judge individual schools. Went over the different indicators and kind of showed where we were improving and where we still need to make some effort. And we had little red arrows and green arrows. I'm really hoping in February, when they release this again for this, for Section 18, that you're going to be seeing a lot more green. I definitely think what we're going to be talking about tonight, which is indicators one and two, that you will see green based on what I'm going to show you tonight. And so, that is basically it. Indicator one is the performance level of our students. It's the percentage of students that are hitting level three or four, which is meeting expectations or exceeding expectations. Indicator two deals with growth. And those are each subdivided into four parts and I will go over each one of those. So, for 1A, this is ELA. On S-Back, the percentage of students that hit the level three or four, all of our students are included here. And you'll see that there was an uptick from 19.4% to 22% of our students hitting level three or four in ELA. 1B, this is still ELA, percentage of level three or four, but this is our high need students. Our high need students are defined as any student who has an IEP, student with disabilities, our EL, our English language learners, as well as any student who qualifies for free and reduced lunch. So, you're talking about a majority of our students, but this is one way the state breaks it down. So, again, in this area, we also saw a gain over last year. 1C, this is math, this is all students, yes, slight uptick of a little over percentage point, at 13.7% of our students. And then, if we break that down for our high need students, you'll also see a gain there. So, this is performance level, students percentage meeting level three or higher. The second one is talking about growth. And the state divides growth into two areas. One area they use for accountability, which is the average percentage of growth target achieved. It's a little bit more nuanced, so I decided to take a little, hopefully, two minutes explanation of this because it can get kind of complicated, so I figured the state explains it better than I could, so. So, let's start there and...
Do they? Yes, that's exactly what it is. It's positive growth and a negative, like it's...
Oh, it's not like a...
I loved...
...respective growth targets. In this example of the 1,223 matched students in ELA, 46.7% or 571 students met or exceeded their growth targets. Conversely, the remaining 53.3% or 652 students did not meet their individual growth targets. They may have made some growth on the vertical scale, but they did not grow as much as their target required. In math, of the 1,220 matched students, 54.3% or 663 students met or exceeded their growth targets, while 45.7% or 557 students did not meet their individual targets. If that's the growth rate, then what is the average percentage of target achieved? To be clear, it is not a percentage of students, it's actually a percentage of the target. All students achieve a certain percentage of their respective targets. Some achieve 100% of their target, some 60%, some 50%, some zero, and so on. When you average those percentages, you get the average percentage of target achieved. In other words, this is the average of the extent of their growth targets that's achieved by all students. In this example, the 1,223 matched students in ELA, on average, achieved 64% of their respective growth targets. Let me say it again, the 1,223 matched students, on average, achieved 64% of their respective growth targets. Correspondingly in mathematics, the 1,220 matched students, on average, achieved 72.7% of their respective growth targets. To summarize...
So, that was a quick, quick explanation of that metric. So, I wanted to do that because the next few slides, we're going to be talking about New Britain students and they're the average of the students' growth target achieved. So, basically, taking them all together, the percentage of each student met on that growth, averaging it together. And you'll see, for ELA, we had a pretty large increase. So, 54.9% of, that was the average percentage of the growth achieved by our students.
This is going to get a little into the weeds.
Yes.
I apologize. But do we know what the distribution looks like for our students' growth targets? Because you can get a 50% by having all your students get halfway to their target, or you could have half of your students make it all the way and the other half making their nose.
Yes, yes. So, we do have, you know, the percentage of students who met their growth rate, yes or no. So, we have that and we also saw a rise in the number of actually hitting that target. So, you know, if they, if they got that growth target by one question, it's a yes. If they missed it by one question, it's a no.
Yep.
But the state does not exclude that in how they judge it. So, we do have that, along with each, each school, the administration has access to the students with what percentage each individual student achieves.
Because I'd be curious to see if our distribution had a normal distribution of where, how many students are achieving or not, or...
So, I think we're saying is, which students are...
What's the distribution of students who are making their...
Who contribute to our...
Well, not even who.
So I wanted to do that because the next few slides, we're going to be talking about new written students. And they're the average of the students' growth target achieved. So basically taking them all together, the percentage of each student met on that growth, averaging it together. And you'll see for ELA, we had a pretty large increase. So fifty-four point nine percent of, that was the average percentage of the growth achieved by our students.
This is going to get a little into the weeds.
Yes.
I apologize. Um, but do we know what the distribution looks like for our students' growth targets? Cause you can get a fifty percent by having all your students get halfway to their target, or you could have half of your students make it all the way and the other half pick in their nose.
Yes, yes. So we do have, you know, the percentage of students who met their growth, yes or no. So we have that and we also saw a rise in the number of actually hitting that target. So, you know, if they, if they got that growth target by one question, it's yes. If they missed it by one question, it's a no.
Yep.
But the state does not include that in their, in how they judge it. So we do have that along with each, um, each school, the administration has access to the students with what percentage each individual student achieved.
Cause I'd be curious to see if our distribution had a normal distribution of where, how many students are achieving or not, or.
Exactly. So, so I think we're saying is which students are.
What's the distribution of students who are making their.
Who contributes more.
Well, not even who contributes more.
How did they contribute on the whole?
Do we have a lot of stu-, a number of students who are getting there or getting really close? And a lot of students who aren't really making a lot of growth? Or do we have more what you want to see, which is a small number of students who are hardly making any growths? Most of your students making a fair bit of growth and some students at the top who get there all the way up a hundred percent.
And it really depends on how you divide it up.
Aggressively.
But overall, it's, it's pretty consistent that, you know, we had an increase in those students. And we, you know, there's, you could look at one group and find, you know, some extremes, but overall, it kind of averages out.
All right.
I would say that's, it's about the same as it's been over the last few years, but with some increases there. In both the amount of students meeting the growth target and percentage of growth target achieved. I know it definitely gets into, and it really does depend on which subgroup you look at.
Okay. And to be clear, the growth target does not necessarily mean they're meeting or exceeding. It is their personal growth target.
Yes.
Which is also what people need to understand, right? It's individual child. So this is, this is meeting students where they are at its best. The number projects what it is that that student needs to get to and whether they got there or not.
And so what they can ask was the distribution of that to say.
Right, to see if our students.
How many students are getting there? How many students?
Right. Our higher achievements students tend to hit their growth rate at a higher.
Yeah.
Even though they divided and they actually divided in the four levels, they divided each one into two. So there's eight different levels of growth targets.
Okay.
So, and they did that in a way that if a student is consistently hitting their growth target, they will go to the next level. If not in one year, two to three years. So the next slide is high need students. Again, we see a bump in the average percentage of target achieved. And for math, you see that as well.
And so while our percentages don't look great in terms of who met three and four, we're moving some, right? I mean, slow and steady.
It does, we should continue to see a steady increase if we see a steady increase in this growth group. It's designed more of that.
Are you going to or will you be able to separate the subgroups?
You can, we can, we can do it. Actually, anyone in state can do it. I have a slide here on EdSite, there.
Right.
You can break it down.
Yeah, I mean, I can access that.
And the schools can still, they can break it down, even burling some of the data that's suppressed for the public. We do have access.
John, do you want to talk about the data tracker, to our district data tracker?
And we also are, you know, tracking that in the district as a whole, as well as each individual school, looking at those individual scores, looking at it by subgroup. And looking at where things need to go. Again, this is a someone task. It's telling us what has happened. We're also getting in metrics with, which I'll change, as we talk about in a minute. Um, you know, what are we doing right now to try to increase this numbers? So this, this is math, all students. And then if we go to the next one, this is math, high need students. So again, we're seeing, we saw a pretty, we saw a larger bump in the growth metric than we did in that achieved.
Right.
Which hopefully, as we go, if we keep this up, we'll also see it in indicator one.
Right.
Which, you know, this is, you know, they didn't always include this as a, as part of our, our score. So this is about half of that of one and two, for grades three through A, it does recognize the growth. So now, um, let's switch over to SAT. Because this is when we're judged as a district, part of indicator one is also grade eleven SAT. There is no growth for SAT because it's a one-shot deal at grade eleven. And we'll see ELA, all students, again, the same format. These are all combined together for the performance report. You see a little bump there. We'll go to high need students. For ELA, we also see a, a percentage point or two of growth there. This is again, level three or four students meeting level three or four. We go to math. And, you know, I thought this was, you know, overall, it's good news. But I didn't want to, I put this on a hundred percentage point scale because I didn't want to take away, we have a lot of work to do.
Yeah, right.
The state and the federal government wants us to meet seventy-five percent of our students. So I did not want to present something other than what it is. So we will see that these, even here with the high need students, I couldn't even put the numbers there because we're only talking about seven point five percent of our students reaching the level three or four, high need students. But that is over two percentage points above what we did last year. So if we keep that up, hopefully, we'll get. So acknowledgements, I just, you know, breaking down, I couldn't give you every single subgroup. Um, again, I'll show you where to go to get all that information, but I wanted to give some of the highlights. African-American males gained seven percentage points in ELA achievements. So this is the actual percentage of students meeting level three or four. So that, that's a very significant gain. Jefferson, out of all our schools, the only one, huge gains, you know, significant. We're seeing a ten point seven percentage point eight in ELA, a fourteen point eight percentage, eight percentage points in math achievement. And then Smith Elementary gained six point five percentage points in math achievement. Those were some of the highlights when we look at our subgroups. So growth there, um, some of the, one thing we've looked at, students with disabilities. And they were really the only major subgroup to show a drop in performance. And when I say performance, I mean the level of three and four. So we saw a slight point three in ELA and point one in math. It was a drop, so I wanted to point that out. I did look at their growth, they did show growth, but I also looked at state where we kind of outperformed the state in how much we were growing compared to last year. We did not do that with our students with disabilities, so that may be one area we need to look at. And third grade students this year, or most of our fourth grade students, it was the only grade level out of third through eight, that we did not see a gain in their average scale score as compared to the students from the year before. So I would really like to see, how are they doing this year? You know, was it a technology issue, the first time taking the test on a computer? Or was it something that we might see, sometimes you have those grade levels that lag a little bit behind? So we'll take a look at that as well. Point out, EdSite, not only is performance data there, we get all sorts of data, not only for New Britain, but other state schools. Ranging from chronic absenteeism, performance, several different areas. We also, they have just rolled out for the district and for individual schools, a secure site where we can actually go into those numbers, get the students, get some additional data, which we may have not had before. And we're in the process of training our admins on that site. Bring it back around, we're looking at assessment. It's part of our, you know, circle of contention. We have our curriculum, our standards of assessment. Try to align our resources with those priorities. We talked about the changes in what we're doing for high quality teacher collaboration time in BU. Teachers being more together and looking at us student work. We're hoping to see this, um, that pay off when we look at assessment, when we look at the subjective assessment for this coming year. And with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sanders, because we're going to look at the district data of what we have right now.
Hi.
Hi.
So I'm going to talk about our district data with a clear emphasis or more of an emphasis on our benchmark data that we've created our benchmark assessments, um, K eight. To mirror our interval assess, the S-Back interval. Um, so the first subset of data is regarding our ELA benchmarks. And you will notice overall, our kids have made improvements from the pre-assessment to our initial benchmark. You look at grade one, they did not have a pre-assessment because we're using their imaginary in their plate. Makes sense so far? High needs population, as John has talked about, we did not disaggregate them out on, on Dr. Sims. In terms of our English learners, our S-Back kids, to get a more comprehensive look at who's making the greater gains. So we will definitely rethink that. You will also notice in terms of our high needs population, that from the pre to the post, our students are making significant increases on our school district-wide benchmarks. So here are some things that we can acknowledge. Um, one, that all the grade levels increase the percentage of students scoring three or four. That mirrors just what John just talked about. Here are some areas of clear growth for us, is our elementary teachers did not engage in calibration activities like the middle school teachers did previously. So we need to ensure the integrity of our elementary results because they have grown exponentially on some new benchmark assessments. So we're definitely looking at opportunities to bring the elementary teachers into, to go through calibration activity because that is critical. Um, and it shows with more relative to the middle school performance and how we're doing on the S-Back compared to our elementary, you know, like forty percent at or three or four. And so we just want to align that. Um, across the board is our grade six students' performance had decreased on their pre-assessment as well as their benchmark for all students, whether they were high needs or not. And we know there's some little things going on with our current sixth graders coming out of fifth grade that the principals are actually working on. Our grade four students compared to all the other grades did not make significant growth. When you look at math benchmarks, it's the same thing. You will notice that our elementary students are making exponential growth compared to our middle school students. Um, our middle school benchmarks were revamped this year, so it could be a contributor to the rigor from learning as well as the calibration activities. Where our elementary, middle school, um, teachers have more expertise in calibration in terms of those assessments. So those are things that we're looking at. The same thing with our high needs population. You notice the same thing, the trend going up kindergarten through fifth grade, where sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, you'll see the, from pre to post, they're making gains, but not as significant as our elementary teachers, students. Again, though, all grades are making, increasing the percentage of students scoring three or four. Our elementary teachers need to engage in calibration activities to ensure integrity of results. We need to identify district and school-based data trends to inform our decision-making. And again, grade six decreased pre and post, um, pre and first benchmark, all the students decreased at this point. Nick will be here after I finish, okay? Now, NWEA, we only administered to grades K, no, first through fifth. So you will notice I have all of our subgroups there from all our EL and then our S-Back students in terms of their fall two thousand eighteen, um, performance with the percentage of the students scoring three or four. So taking a little deeper, our current grade three through five students, um, scores on the fall two thousand eighteen, um, indicates that they're maintaining the, um, the percentage of the students at or above proficiency when you look at their end-of-year score, um, for the spring of two thousand eighteen. Whereas our current first through second grade, when you look at how they fared as kindergarteners in first grade, there was a significant decrease in their performance from spring two thousand eighteen to fall two thousand eighteen. The other key piece, and I know we talked about this in one of our curriculum meetings, is how do we integrate those NWEA target skills into our SMART group instruction? Not totally focusing on all of the pieces, but there are some critical elements of that NWEA that we need to integrate into our SMART group practices. Here are our next steps.
Quick question, sorry, on that last one, um, where you say the grades one to two student.
Yes, when they were kindergarten first graders. Now they are current first and.
First and second grader, so this is cohort.
Yes, as best as it can.
Specific, yep.
Their, their decrease was ten percentage points or higher, whereas grades three through five was insignificant because it was less than five percent. So our, our next steps is to identify areas of strengths and improvement to inform our curriculum construction and assess their practices. That is really critical because with our work with the state, we talked about, um, what are the key learning experiences? We want all pre-K through twelve students in New Britain to learn and be able to do that. Goes back to superintendent's goal is what is the profile of a New Britain student? We have to identify that first. And when we do identify that, coming out of the curriculum audit, the one thing that we can do in terms of the richness of our professional learning cycle is we can align what's happening at MBU better to inform what's happening in our school. So those are our critical next steps. Any questions for me?
Nick, did you have a question? I just want to, oh, I'm sorry, I was just going to add to that also. So at our next curriculum committee meeting, we want to go over the results of the audit, but then there's also, I just wanted to go over some critical documents in terms of life and learning competencies. And we talked about the profile of the graduate and what we really want to see our New Britain students be when they graduate New Britain High and the practices that we're engaging in currently with, um, MBU time.
The other thing I need to add is, we had a, a really good meeting with the state last week. And one of the things that they pointed out to us is our work within our professional learning cycle. I mean, it ties directly into this and stuff as superintendent, and we've been talking about this. So what is our aim in terms of our instruction? And so that's why it's really critical that we identify those strengths and areas of improvement so we can become a little bit more targeted, not just so that our kids can meet, um, their, their target both in young, but that also helps them to, to, to master how to be a critical thinker and a critical learner in their day-to-day. What is the social emotional piece, whether it's knowing that you have to stay at the football game even though you're cold because you're.
Good connection.
That's the it.
And, and the other piece that came out in why you don't have the high school data is because we're still working on how that looks within Power School. Um, and what's critical and the questions to answer, is it around math performance? Is it around S-Back, I mean, I'm sorry, the SAT? So we're still trying to figure those out with a hard date of another week or so, so that we can also, when we're thinking about pre-K twelve system, it's not just K eight. It's also bringing in the dots data from pre-K, it's bringing in the twelve data to make informed decisions, to curricularly process.
So my question was about SATs. I just wanted to wait to sort everything, but, um, does it take into account the fact that people take SATs several times?
No. It's, it's only for Connecticut SAT school day. The one day.
That's a drawback, I think. There's a, there's a lot, in a way, there's a lot to be said about the fact that, because I took the SAT three times, right?
As a student.
I didn't say they were, I wasn't finished, so, um, and I'm thinking about if you have the opportunity to take it multiple times because you want to get a better score. If they do get a better score and it's not on the school day time, what is it, what does, what does that mean, right? So if I took it, if I go to Hall High School on a Saturday and take it versus whether I take it on a school day in New Britain, do I, maybe I get a better score at, at Hall and you don't have that data. That's, so I'm, I'm wondering if there is a way that we can look at it and how do we.
We do, we do get the data and I, every time someone, about probably once a month or so, I'll, I'll get a file and about twelve test scores. And I upload those to Powers School so that when the high school is looking at data on individual students, they have all of the times that students took the SAT. When the state does their evaluation, when they say what is a level three, what is a level four, that is totally independent of SAT and the college board.
So it is, it's just how they look at the data. That's what I was trying to figure out. So we have access to it and we can see if there is.
We do have access to scores, and each school has access to reports through the college board that provide more than just the numbers that they can see in Power School.
Gotcha. So it's just how the state looks at us, not necessarily how each kid-
And for me, my point was, if not all students are going to advocate and take it a second or a third time, it gives an unfair advantage to those who do access it for a second and third time.
An unfair advantage, how?
Well, I think not all of our kids have access to a second or third opportunity.
If the school day is after-
Right.
Right. Is after, is their second or third time.
As opposed to say-
As their first time, I've never seen the test.
Right, I, yes, I understand that. It gets, with more practice.
I would say, I would say that, but that's, that's totally different. My opinion of the test itself is totally different than the, me asking about the access to the scores. I do have my own personal opinion about the test itself. I don't think it's very culturally competent, but that's just-
That's a good point, I heard what you said.
Yes.
And I will say too, that's one of the things when we were creating the elementary benchmarks, as well as the middle school benchmarks, to try to take into account is the interest of the stories, because it was more about the exposure in getting kids, one, to be familiar in stamina, because I'm a firm believer that many of our kids would do much better if they just knew how to navigate what they're being asked to do, if they had the stamina to take the test. And I think, one of the things that we've done this school year is we've taken some of the assessments off of them, so they're not going from NWEA to S-BAC, S-BAC to NWEA. Now, it's either, it's like one core thing that they're focused on, because our kids have been overwhelmed with the amount of testing that we put on them in May. So hopefully, those things will pay off, or think about the social-emotional aspect of assessing our students. And ensuring that if our subgroups for high needs are increasing, are we actually ensuring that the kids' accommodations are also taken into account when we give them their interim benchmark assessments? Because we need to make sure that the conditions are the same. So once we ensure that the conditions are the same, the kids will do better.
Thank you very much, any other questions from anyone? Thank you.
Nick.
Yes, I thought he, I thought he asked it earlier. He asked a question, I wasn't sure.
It's, just wanted to comment, because I know Ms. Sims had brought up, or, sorry, Dr. Sims had brought up. But it's interesting to go on the EdSite and see that, while we definitely still have a very large gap in term, a very large racial gap in the overall students' meeting goal, when you look at the growth, the percentage of growth that they're making, those averages, and again, they're averages, so who knows how, how the curves look for each of the subgroups? But at least those seem to be a lot tighter, which means we are moving all students, but, you know, we just have to start figuring out ways to move some students even more.
Right, closing the gaps is a important piece. And that's where I always talk about how we can, you know, when we had the info on, on the curriculum and the schools that work and whatever, you know, and they talked about bringing equity in as a part of it. And, you know, to me, equity has to be the forefront, not step four of anything that we do in New Britain. It needs to be the lens that every single thing is done through, or else we are not going to close those opportunity gaps. When you do things, and you do, we're doing a lot of good things, that's great. It's going to bring up everybody, exactly like Nick is saying, that's, that's very predictable, that that's exactly what's going to happen. The kids who do well are going to do better, everyone's going to do better. The gap is still going to exist. We have to address the gap more specifically, but yes.
Just to give you like one example, is like on the ELA test, if we go back to the 15 and 16 data, there was like a four, four-point gap between in-growth, and that's narrowed to under a two-point gap. So, again, small growth gains, but gains, and that's, that's a good thing.
But the gap is, is shrinking, but it's still too much, but it is shrinking.
It's shrinking.
Now we just want to say less than 1%.
Awesome, lovely.
It would be awesome. That is our goal, less than 1%, if not the same. Consent agenda. Let me take a gaze. Enough, finish it. That's it, probably, there's stuff. No, okay.
No, I know.
All right. Should we go, or is he?
If there are no objections.
I see no objections, we're approved, and we are going on to the next item of business, okay? Under new business 5A, we have policy to approve the 6163.32 for service animals. I will entertain our motion.
Second.
Okay. Discussion, Mr. Mercier?
Just to put forward, this is, this was actually brought to our attention. There is a student who actually has need for a service animal, we don't have a policy. The policy really, really is just putting into policy what already exists to some degree in ADA and other state and federal laws. But we are, we also attached with the policy, there are some guidelines for administrators to how to handle that, and also for how parents to let the district know that there is a need for a service animal, and what exactly that entails, and what the responsibilities are of the owner of the service animal, and what the district will provide or will not provide. It's worth looking over, but I'd recommend posting, postponing to our second meeting.
For this one, we don't have a second meeting?
Sorry, yes, but postponing to a second meeting.
Okay.
So I'd make a motion to postpone, postpone till our next meeting.
Second.
All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
So the 17th?
Yes.
No, January.
January, because the 17th is that different. But that does, the policy does not prevent the person from having their service animal. It just means that we do not have a policy of record, but when we don't have a policy of record, it's a policy from the state, so states, so. Second is the bid waiver purchase order to remove or replace one boiler located in New Britain High School.
Motion.
Second.
It's pretty self-explanatory, you guys saw the pictures.
Yeah.
We need a boiler. I don't think Mr. Ray needs to tell us that, we need a boiler. I'm pretty sure if it's cold, we need to-
I just have one question. Is there any hazardous to that, in removing that at all? Because I saw the pictures of the boiler and-
Sure, there's hazard, but I'm sure-
But was there anything hazardous to it?
He's, oh, he's right.
He wants to talk to us, so, please, please, Mr. Moore, please.
How else about this idea?
Give us an overview.
They've answered almost all of the questions, except for hazardous material.
My concern was simply was, because of the amount of time that, you know, how long it is, it's been there, and with the issues we have around the city with that spesso, I mean, removing it. And I was looking at the picture, and I was, I don't know what the white stuff around it is, and I wasn't sure if removing that, it's gonna, I was just questioning that.
All hazardous material on the outside of the boiler has been removed over 20 years ago.
Okay.
Any hazardous material may be found inside the boiler, in the masonry in the brick, and the demo contractor, the ringing company that's taking the boiler, will dispose of the boiler as hazardous material. So, we're rolling that boiler out of the boiler room, load it up on a flatbed, and dispose of it as hazardous material. But, none of the insulation on the outside of the boiler has any hazardous material.
Excellent.
I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Moore and Ms. West for providing us with the pictures as well as the quote information.
Yes.
That's something, that's something that the board has requested in the past, is to see some of the information on the quotes, especially when we don't go through a full formal bid process. We still like to make sure we're getting a reasonable price, so having the quote information helps us, thank you.
Any other questions, comments, or questions? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Excellent. Okay, approval of the contracts. To this question. All right. And no committee has seen the question. C is personnel to approve the administrative contracts for, where are they?
We don't have them. Is that executive session? Okay.
That's what I thought, okay. So, we are going to go, I entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss the update on pending legal matters, the administrative contracts, and any other things you deem fit, Ms. Sarah.
Absolutely, Mr. Candidate.
Yes, I will, for the first part of it, for the, for the, for the, Dr. Tucker and Mr. Kane and Ms. Sarah, and this will be the last two items addressed on our agenda this evening.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?